All right, I will go ahead and call to order the Planning Commission meeting for November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three if we can go ahead and stand for the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Kelly, do you mind doing roll call?
Absolutely. Commissioners Miller, Malloy, Fountain, McLean.
Here.
Broschiers, Commissioners Angel Ford and Baxter and Chair Robertson are excused, and Vice Chair Garek Kunarowski.
Here. Thank you. All right, we have one set of minutes for consideration from the October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Does, do any of the commissioners have any additions or corrections? All right, seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented.
What?
So the building's gonna fall apart apparently.
Sounds like a noisy fridge.
All right, so this portion of the agenda is reserved for any members of the public that would like to address the Planning Commission on any topic that is not related to any items on the agenda. If there, if you would like to address the Planning Commission, please come forward, sign in and state your name before your comments, or if there's anyone online. Nope, okay. All right, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. There's one public hearing on the agenda tonight, and before opening the hearing, I'll ask the city attorney to review the public hearing process.
We don't need to go, because it's, all right, it's not a quasi judicial hearing, so we actually don't need to go through it, we can just open the hearing.
Great, thank you.
I know that makes everybody happy.
All right, so tonight we have planning file DCA dash twenty-three dash zero-one. It's a proposal at the direction of the City Council to amend our development code to prohibit the recreational vehicle parks in the city, and to authorize recreational vehicles as caretaker dwellings when associated with open-air mini-storage facilities that do not have permanent structures or structures intended for occupancy on-site. Is there any conflict of interest, ex parte communication, or bias for anyone to report? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to Kelly for the staff report.
You Vice Chair, so before you tonight are two proposed topics for code changes. They're kind of related together, so we took the opportunity to mesh them in together. But these are from the direction of City Council from two different considerations before applicants or potential property interests. In February of this year, we had a discussion with the City Council at the request of a property owner to allow for recreational vehicles to be utilized as caretaker dwellings in limited circumstances, specifically for recreational vehicle storage facilities, where they don't have a permanent structure, where they don't have an onsite office use, where they would need to have a permanent building. They wanted to still be able to have the opportunity to provide security, and so they made the request to council for the consideration to allow for recreational vehicles to be used as a caretaker dwelling. As part of that discussion, we provided an analysis for the City Council regarding some potential issues that might need to be mitigated associated with the request, specifically regarding sewer usage and the ability for that vehicle to connect to a sewer utility or a septic system onsite, so that they don't have to constantly move the vehicle on and off sites to dump the gray and black water, and then also have the connection for electricity and water as well. And then it was deemed to be most appropriate to tie any permitting to the actual RV itself, rather than the land use, so that we can make sure that those connections to utilities are acceptable based off of the vehicle itself, rather than the use. And instead of making this a full land use permit, it was proposed to be more of a temporary permit, because it is an employee-based type of use as a residence. It was identified to be more of a temporary use permit that would also allow the city to regularly inspect on an annual basis to make sure that those utility connections are there viable and available. So based off of the direction from council, we drafted the proposed code amendments and included those as Exhibit A within the staff reports. The amendments included some basic code cleanup language to better define and utilize a universal term for, I believe we identified it as self-serve personal storage, or private storage, or however it is that we named it in this document. We created a universal title for it, which we didn't have in the code previously. We clarified that a mini-storage use is inclusive of outdoor storage of vehicles and other paraphernalia within a confined location, and then included the temporary use standards for the permitting procedures. So that's step one for the proposed code changes. Later in the year, we had a property owner have an interest in operating a recreational vehicle park. I want to make it clear that this is for tourist purposes, not for residential purposes, so it's not subject to the Oregon Revised Statutes regarding housing and use of recreational vehicles for that purpose. This is purely a tourist use, where the RVs are there for a temporary basis, like a KOA campsite sort of thing. So originally, when the code was reviewed currently, it was identified that recreational vehicle parks currently have a path to be permitted in the city within the highway commercial zone, subject to a conditional use permit. However, upon further communication internally with staff and in speaking with the applicant's representative, it was identified that in two thousand and eighteen, it was previously presented to the City Council under the code evaluation that recreational vehicle parks were not permitted in the city if they were privately owned, because that was what the code evaluation was at that time, and then asked council for direction at that time about whether or not they wanted to permit recreational vehicle parks in the city. The direction provided in two thousand and eighteen was do not change the code with the basis of we do not want to allow recreational vehicle parks in the city. And so the code wasn't changed, however, there was a misinterpretation in two thousand and eighteen. So we re-presented it to council last month, and provided them that clarification of the record, as we should and as is appropriate. And during communications with the City Council, they identified similar concerns from the previous council discussion in two thousand and eighteen regarding the tourist-based recreational vehicle parks, and directed staff to bring forth a code amendment to prohibit them throughout the city. Right now, in our code, it is stipulated as two separate uses. You have a publicly-owned recreational vehicle park, which is considered a Class II public use, and then you have standard commercial recreational vehicle parks, which is a privately-owned vehicle park, which is a Class III commercial use, and that's only therefore eligible in the highway commercial zone. What we've done is we evaluated the development code and the municipal code, and we've identified that in our municipal code, it already provides standards and authorization of use for publicly-owned recreational vehicle parks as campsites, much like you have for Gil's Landing and then the seasonal use at Cheetah Lake Park. And so since that is already an authorized use elsewhere within the municipal code, we identified that it was not needed to be referenced or included as part of the development code. So what is proposed in front of you is simply the removal of the term publicly-owned recreational vehicle parks, defining what a recreational vehicle park is to ensure that we are talking about the tourist version of a recreational vehicle park, and then specifically listing within each of the land use categories that it is a prohibited use, to make sure that it is clear and consistent throughout the code. So those are the proposed code changes in front of you. Within the staff report, we provide the necessary findings to ensure that the proposed code changes are consistent with the statewide planning goals, as well as the city's comprehensive plan. And so that concludes the summary of the proposed code changes. We did receive an email from a resident of the community that identified a opposition to the council's consideration to deny recreational vehicle parks in the city. That has been provided to council, to the Planning Commission prior to the hearing. It's also available to you on the dais for review, and we've included it for the public review as well. So I will conclude my report and answer any questions, and take it to the next step.
Thanks. Does anybody have any questions for Kelly?
Red light. You need to literally push the button. I said Charlie was pushing my button.
I literally had to do it.
What is the RV park that's at the north end of town on?
On Vine and Main Street.
What is that considered? I didn't realize that was an RV park until... Is it an RV park?
Short answer for you is I do not know the permitting status of that facility. I tried to pull some basic land use applications. We have not found any in the time period in between when I was made aware of it and now. That being said, anytime you have an existing use in the city, and the city changes its code, if that existing use was a permitted use, it falls under what is the category of legal non-conforming. So becoming a legal non-conforming use, it means you have every right to continue operations, you have every right to be what you are, and there's even a path for you to expand upon your operations as a legal non-conforming use, if you so wish, through a permitting process. It's only until such time as that use stops operations, and then the operations have been ceased for a period of at least one year, that they lose the non-conforming status, and then would no longer be able to operate that use and have to conform to the current code. So I do not know the status of that specific property, but if it is permitted as an RV park, it's already considered a legal non-conforming use, because that property is within, I believe it's in the residential high-density zone, which means it's not a permitted use for what we're talking about anyway. And so then it already falls under that non-conforming status.
Boy, it sure looks like an RV park.
It very well could be.
And if they're not permitted, I would be worried if I was the owner of that place.
None of the actions that we are taking here today affect that property. And so I don't want to speak to the conformance of that property or not, because we have not done the research.
So would that fall under a code enforcement issue, or?
No, because there's no action that we're taking tonight that affects the legality of that property.
Hey guys, if it's part of the discussion, it needs to be on the record. No, I know. I'm just making sure that when you're doing that, if it's part of the deliberations, it needs to be part of the record. And I was gonna just reiterate, I'm not exactly sure which one we're talking about, but if it's in existence now, nothing we're doing here, just like Kelly's saying, we can't retroactively go and say, oh, you can't do that anymore.
I know. I just was wondering if that's what that was.
I have not done any research on that property to identify how it was permitted. I can't speak to whether or not it was permitted as a manufactured home park, which RVs are authorized as part of that. I don't know. And so I don't want to speak to the legality of a single property.
And Trey, it's behind the Dryer Partnership, the old Ralston House, which is across the street from the Legion. There's an alley back there that has a little RV park. That's what they're talking about. East Vine. It's the corner of East Vine and Main, right behind the old Ralston House.
And again, I can't speak to that if they are living there, if it is storage there, if it is operating as a residential use. In either situation, it is not...
That's what this is, right? Kind of like that. It's just RVs wanting to have...
Correct.
But not a permanent living.
So we're talking short-term, like coming in for Strawberry Festival for like five or six days at a time, not years at a time, or months at a time.
Kind of like what Sweet Home does with the Oregon Jamboree. They've got multiple places RVs come in, camping spots that are there for four days, and then they...
So what we're talking about is the equivalent of our Gil's Landing RV park? That would just be privately owned. That's what we're talking about. This is a seasonal, this is a temporary, not more than thirty days. This is, this is a tourist function, not a residential function. State law limits our ability to restrict the residential function kind of the equation, which is not what we're talking about tonight. This is purely the tourist function, the campground for RVs function.
We don't have any other, we just have their Gil's Landing.
And then in Cheetah Lake.
And, oh, because Waterloo's County, correct?
Correct. That's not within the city.
Okay. I didn't think we had any other places in town. Okay.
Thought he was clearing his throat, he was gonna say something. All right, anybody else?
Regarding the night watchman trailer on a storage site, are we still discussing that?
That's part of the whole code changes that I proposed here, yes.
Okay, I think I can speak to that, if I may. I have a storage facility outside of Lebanon, and I have a night watchman person that lives in a trailer on that property. It's a lifesaver. It keeps away theft. It's a, it's a huge positive for security. We discussed it at a Planning Commission meeting when Gelots opened their storage facility down there. It was suggested that night, and I'm glad to see that somebody is following through with that and we're moving in the steps to have that done. Absolutely a great idea. I'm a hundred percent behind that myself. I think that that's a very good move. I think that that should pass without any trouble. I think the council's recommendations on it are spot-on. Now, regarding the RV parks in town, I think the City Council has got it right. I think they're doing the right thing, and I think they're making the right move. Just drive up to Sweet Home and drive through their RV parks that they have in their town, and you'll see what I mean. After a while, they just, they just don't look good. There, there's always a garbage problem. What I think we need to do is encourage the building of houses, duplexes, apartments, and not encourage RV parks in town. Now, I know that there's, there's an opposition here to that, and I'll speak to a couple of things on this, on this letter. As far as the fire department and fire safety goes, if you've ever seen one of these things catch on fire, there's no escaping. There's no getting away from it, and it will burn down everything that's close to it. Once they catch on fire, and they do very easily, they go up fast. They go up like a can of gas. And there, there was another issue regarding crime. I don't think there's an issue with crime, but code enforcement and crime are two different things here. Code enforcement is, you know, do they have their sewer hooked up right? Or, you know, are they leaving too much garbage outside, you know, things that aren't necessarily criminal? But there always just, about always is code enforcement issues with these kind of, with these kind of things. I've done a lot of, you know, I've been a contractor. I do handyman work. I've done a lot of work on these parks, and there's always a problem with the sewer lines and water lines. They're basically hoses and tubes laying on the ground. Just, if you want to see what I mean, just go drive through one of them. There's always a problem with those, whether they're freezing or spilling sewage, or whatever. Now, there's no comparison, as far as the tax base goes, which is another thing mentioned in this, to somebody that owns a travel trailer and it's parked in an RV spot compared to somebody that's building houses or duplexes or apartments. The only thing we're taxing people on is the spot that that trailer's sitting on. We don't tax them on the trailer that they're living in. So as far as the tax base goes, financial-wise, the city's a lot better off with a stick-built house or duplex or an apartment on that property. I think that the, that there's a wiser use to these vacant lots, rather than put in an RV, temporary RV park. Another issue that I think that a lot of people don't want to talk about is people that live in these RVs are there temporarily. They're not there permanently. They really don't have the skin in the game that most people do that live in an apartment, or a duplex, or a house here in town. They're here temporarily to do a job, or a service, and then they're gonna be gone. I think that, without sounding ill-compassioned, I think that we need to trend towards more permanent housing and permanent residence, rather than temporary residences where people live two or three months. If they're only gonna be here a month, or two or three months, by golly, they can rent an apartment for that amount of time, or they can stay in a hotel. If they're going to a college here, and they can't afford an apartment, they have no business going to college. And that's the way I see it. Welcome any comments.
Yeah, I'm not saying I'm in favor of anything, but I do want to point out that we do have a lot of traveling nurses and medical staff that do live in fifth wheels and are seeking places to park those. And oftentimes Gil's Landing is full. And the only reason I know this is because I purchased a fifth wheel from a traveling nurse who was having trouble finding someplace to park while she was here working. So not talking in, you know, in favor or opposition of it, just pointing out that there are needs in the medical realm as well for temporary RV parking.
All right, thanks, guys. Okay, if we have no further questions of staff, I think I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And there's technically no applicant, right? So we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. The hearing is now open for members of the public to speak in favor of the application. There is no one here. And anybody wanting to speak in opposition of the application can come forward. You could sign in and state your name for the record, please.
I'm Regina Thompson. I live at five ninety-four West Sherman. And I wrote the email, and I'm opposed to the application. I had not realized that it was just focused on tourists when I wrote my response, but many of the items, I think, also applied to less than thirty days. Well, I understand and agree, there are some RV parks that have been poorly maintained and are older. I've also seen very many that are nicely maintained and don't have a trash problem, or whatnot. My father-in-law, when he was alive, would not go anywhere. He could not take his own RV in bed with him, you know. It there, it fit his lifestyle and his needs. I am just really struggling with the nexus about why this is an unwanted business. Well, I certainly appreciate your comments that in the older parks you've seen, there's been code enforcement problems and mishandling of sewage. In my experience in the parks that I've seen, and I've actually, I don't own an RV. I don't want to own an RV. I don't camp. I don't RV. But in my work, I come across RV parks, and I have not seen that. And it's simply because these are, these are very expensive facilities. A developer and a manager is not going to let them get degraded when something is built new. I mean, and again, I'm not talking about the RV parks that are fifty years old or have been ill-managed over the years. So I'm really struggling why we would, within our code, want to not allow this use, whether short-term or long-term, because I do think it serves the community.
Regina, if I could get clarification, you said in your work you come across a lot of RV parks. Could you please tell me what your work is?
I work for the Oregon Department of Transportation. I buy property for highway-wide names. So I've hit more than one RV park over the years since they're, they're next to the interstate a lot. So, and that is when I was looking at the statistics of, was there more crime? I, two of the three I chose were ones that I had had highway acquisitions on. And again, I, you know, I don't know if an RV park's ever gonna come into town. I do think, though, the code should allow it and appropriate stipulations put in place when a conditional use permit is filed. I don't think to outright deny at this point is appropriate for the community.
Okay, thank you so much. Your comments, is there anybody else online? All right, so seeing no further comments or questions, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing now. And all further discussion will be limited between the Planning Commission and staff. So what do we think?
I just think the council's got it right.
Well, and I think for our purposes, like since they directed us to move forward with the code changes, the code changes meet the criteria, like that's kind of what we're considering, and the ultimate approval goes to the City Council, right? Recommendation, right.
I would recommend one thing, that they do add some kind of a stipulation of garbage service. I would recommend one thing, that they do add some kind of a stipulation of garbage service, either that the tenant take care of it or the...
For the long-term?
Short-term or long-term.
If it were to not be prohibited? Or are you talking about the caretaker?
If it's allowed, like for a carnival, stuff like that.
So the... There are two different things that we are talking about, just for clarification. We're talking about a permanent campground like Gil's Landing versus the rental of a park facility for a special event, like the Pirates event, or if the Strawberry Festival wanted to use the part of the Cheetah Lake Park and include RV parking on that sort of thing.
So it's already in the code.
So those are special events. We're talking about the permanent operation of a tourist campsite facility like Gil's Landing. And that is just being proposed to be completely prohibited. So there would be no stipulation about garbage because it's not... As is proposed currently. Make a recommendation to council as you would see fit.
Anybody? Any more comments? If not, then would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the development code amendment DCA 2301 to the city council based on the written findings in the staff report, and direct staff to draft an order of recommendation incorporating the findings and conditions of approval.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, the motion passes. All those opposed? Sorry. Okay, sorry. Can we do that again? Great. Sorry. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right. Thank you. That's it. All right. Do we have any commission business?
So again, just as a reminder for everybody, this is a recommendation of the planning commission to the city council. It will be presented to the city council at their December council meeting. Currently, we do not have any applications on the docket for the December meeting. I do withhold the right to put something on it, though, if it is necessary. So I don't want to release the planning commission just yet to be free for the month of December. But I will let you know probably towards the beginning of the month if we will be having a meeting in December or not. So besides that, I'm sure you guys have seen a lot of progress on some construction around town. We've got Panda Express coming in at the intersection of airports and the highway. Chipotle is just close to being open.
No, I work at Schmeeta Thursday nights, and so we're making amendments to everything for that.
There you go. And I know that you all probably get questions all the time about Dairy Queen, but what we have as a status update is that they have their permits, they have pulled their permits, and they are working to finalize a contractor to do the work. So that is eventually going to be underway as well. Yes, it is. I would like for it to be done before I retire. Very fast, yeah.
So do we have any applications or any activity or any building at all going on?
Oh, yeah. So all of that that we just talked about, a number of the housing projects that you all have approved over the last two years are getting started again.
What I meant was activity. Is there a lot of traffic or is it slowing down?
In terms of permits coming in, it's definitely slowing down. We generally see a slowdown during, you know, the end of the year and a pickup at the beginning of the year for permitting and perhaps for the construction cycle. But overall, we see a lot of concepts coming forward. But they're slow rolling it based off of the inflation and construction costs. And then you're still having some delays in terms of products for construction as well.
Seems like I see, was it Ron or somebody that presented to council that Lebanon was pretty high on the list of permits? Or what was that statistic?
We were informed that the city of Lebanon is within the top 10 in the state in number of building permits issued per capita. So we are an incredibly fast-growing community and doing a pretty fantastic job with an incredibly small staff, so...
Great place to live.
Yep. If you ever come into City Hall, make sure to give the front counter staff some love because they do an incredible job, so... Yeah, it's been rocking on all cylinders, but we are seeing a slowdown. But we are also seeing bigger proposals prepping for the pipeline as well, so... Yes. Yes. No. I can't speak to anything.
But you can.
I have nothing to add. It's got beautiful flooring on the second floor. Anywho, that's all I have.
All right, great. Trying to be... No, I'm just kidding. All right, no, I'm failing. But no. All right, so we don't have... The next regular scheduled meeting would be December 20th, possibly. So keep that on your calendar. Thank you all for being here. And I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 6:37 PM. Thank you.